Yeah. I'm not, but I was. Yeah.
Spend how much I can. They're only, they couldn't be off by an hour.
That's where they should put GPS. Spend all that money to open.
Much policy of the Board of Education for the School District of Barrow. Order for Monday, March 11, 2013. The board calls Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. McDevon.
Here.
Mr. Mearing.
Here.
Mr. Mortimer.
Here.
Ms. Riley.
Here.
Mr. Dugro.
Here.
And both of you continue with the pledge to play with the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion by Dugro, second by Mearing, on discussion.
Kevin, I guess as long as this, as long as I had full session last meeting, I guess I'd like to plug in immediately why I had to leave.
Sure. And the notation would be the potential for a conflict of interest because your wife is employed at the middle school?
Yes.
And we'll shoot back.
Hi, Stephanie.
Peter?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Ladies and gentlemen, please sign up by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And here, brothers and correspondents, I have now needed board members of correspondence, administrative correspondence.
I have three pieces to enter tonight. The first one is from Habitat for Humanity, thanking the Barrow School District for the Super Bowl Sunday 2013. The money that was raised through the creative and fun event will be used to help build the Barrow housing area. And there are some pictures included too, so I'll push that along. The second is an email that we received from a teacher from the Michette of Wisconsin School District. And this person attended the RTI conference in Green Bay, and we had Dave Schwartz and Lori Miller and Nick Carles presenting on our structures for intervention time. And this person is commending the team and the, how they work together and the interventions and structures that we have in place, and commented that it was truly the best presentation that he experienced at the summit this year. So, they represented us well, and we're happy to get that feedback. And then, it's my pleasure to inform the board that we have a recipient of the 2013 Cole Fellowship Award. For this award, the teacher is presented with a $1,000 grant, and this is from selecting many fine candidates. This person was chosen because of their skills, a leader, an agent for positive change, and superior ability to inspire level of learning. The teacher and the school each will receive a $1,000 grant, and will be recognized at a regional luncheon on Sunday, April 7th, along with other fellowship, whole excellence scholarship, and initiative scholarship recipients. And so, we want to send out our congratulations to Jane McMahon from Jack Young Middle School.
Any other administrative correspondence? Here, you don't agree to report any other titled public viewpoints? Is anyone here for public viewpoints, Kevin? Any public viewpoints? Any public viewpoints? Hearing and seeing none, I'd like to move on to staff and student recognition.
Actually, I'm going to defer to Danny here, who is going to introduce our guests here tonight, and talk a little bit about what that document is that they put together and received recognition for.
Good evening. Each of you should have a packet. I will be, this is what I will be talking about for a few minutes, and then our school counselors will highlight. So, what you have are copies of the Support Personnel Accountability Report Card for Wisconsin, or of course, in education, we always have an acronym, so it's referred to as the Spark Report. And what this is, is a continuous improvement document that gives school counseling programs an opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to improving student outcomes. So, the Spark has been developed by the Wisconsin School Counselors Association, and school counselors are key players in the school accountability movement. So, collecting and analyzing data can help the counselor and their administrators identify achievement gaps, any potential learning obstacles that students might need, and also be as a tool to help evaluate their programs to make sure that we are making a difference for all students. School counseling programs must be able to demonstrate that their work supports the district's strategic plan and mission, and concretely impacts student academic success. So, the Spark Reports that you have in front of you are the tool that we help to, we utilize to show the impact that our school counseling programs have. So, this is actually the second year that our district has submitted their Spark Reports for official evaluation by the Wisconsin School Counselor Association. Actually, last year, Gordon Wilson Elementary, Jack Young Middle School, and Barrow High Schools submitted their Spark Reports for judging. And last year, GLW and the high school received what's called the Pioneer Award, which is essentially kind of like a runner-up award. So, this year, we actually had reports submitted by GLW East, Abe, Middle School, and the high school. So, they all submitted their reports to the state for official evaluation. And GLW Abe, East, and the Middle School were selected to receive what's called the Program of Promise Award for 2012. This level of recognition is the top achievement awarded to school counseling programs in the state. Other award winners this year included Burlington High School, Racine Case High School, River Block Middle School, which is in the Stoughton School District, and then Sawyer Elementary School, which is in Sturgeon Bay. So, the fact that we had this many award winners from one district speaks very highly about all the great work that our counselors are doing in the Barrow School District. So, we're going to take just a minute and highlight just one piece out of the reports that you have in front of you, so I'll turn it over to the counselors.
So, to save time, I'm just going to speak for the elementary buildings and just highlight a little snippet from each school. So, if you see the GLW Spark Award, if you look at that up in the statement that the principal has made, in the top paragraph area, there is some focus on their goal, which was to reach an implementation level of 80% in the areas of expectations defined, expectations taught, reward system, violation system, monitoring management, and district support. Then they take a self-assessment and found that their student support personnel team raised their implementation average from 61% up to 82%. So, that's really focusing on those PBIS tools and things like that that we need the students to know. So, they're making great gains there. At East Elementary School, the student support personnel team was implementing a math study hall for those students who needed extra assistance with reaching and learning, and learning their targets. And they had found out that 94% of those students demonstrated an understanding of the math target after participating in that extra math study hall. At Abe, looking at our school climate section, we really focused this year on physical aggression referrals, and out on our playground referrals, and we saw a big decrease in those when we were using things like groups, behavior intervention groups, our check-in, check-out program, which both are tier-two pieces to the PBIS model, as well as really emphasizing our universal cool tools for our students. So, again, we saw a major decrease in those referrals, so we're pretty positive about that.
And for those of you that don't know, that's Jamie Kern. Kern from Abe.
Hi, I'm sorry.
I'm Paul Anderson, counselor at the middle school. This is Christine Olson. I'm going to refer to the Jack Young Middle School. There's the front and then the backside. Backside, I'll be referring directly to the personal social, the middle, the middle column. Basically, PBIS was implemented last year for the first time, and so we did a lot of planning to get that all into place. And PBIS is all about collecting data, and from a number of different sources, you know, in regards to student actions and behaviors. And we found that during the school year, our data was tracking in the cafeteria, that there were a number of disciplinary referrals that were coming out of that particular setting. So, we targeted that particular setting and developed what we call Cool Refreshers, which is a reminder of the expectations that the school has in terms of being safe, respectful, and responsible. That was targeted specifically at the cafeteria. And you'll notice that basically, on average, up until the time that we did the refresher, we had about nine referrals that was coming out each month. And after that refresher was completed, we basically averaged three referrals for the next two months after that. So, there was a significant drop-off and a definite positive impact as a result of that particular activity.
I'm Andy Walvo, though. I'm one of the counselors here at the high school. Our report is also front and back, and if you look at the area that's titled Academic, that's one of the domains on the backside. It deals with ACT test scores and what we're doing at the high school to not only encourage more students to take ACT tests, but also what we're using that information for with Plan and Explore, two tests that are in that sequence. Students are taking that as eighth graders at the middle school, and what we're using that for here at the high school level is to make curriculum decisions and to make sure that the students are getting what they need in the areas of English and Math with some double-doce courses within our RTI model. The other two domains that you see there, the personal social and the career, with PBIS, we've begun to have some student panel input as far as what the students want to see here as expectations that they need to meet. And with the career domain on the very right-hand column, there are a lot of different opportunities here that high school students can take advantage of, whether it's co-op opportunities, or taking advantage this year of the ASVAB test that's going to be offered on Wednesday, that offers a nice score report that is strictly off the Collins Code for careers, and then they will have access to an online account where they can research those careers more closely. We also have advisory committee meetings through the Career and Technical Education Committee, where we gather input from the community so that we can best meet the needs of our students. So, those are the three domains that are on the backside of our report, and kind of what we're striving for in those three areas.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, is this, are these reports accessible online?
They are. I know for sure the elementary ones are posted on her website. I didn't get a chance to look to see if the middle school or the high school were posted.
They're supposed to be the first two I've checked.
If they are not out there, Doug, we won't make sure.
Okay, I think they, these are really good informational reports for people, and they should be able to access them.
Absolutely. Great work.
Is Tim here? Tim Damos?
Yeah.
Just, Tim, just want to make sure you're picking up this incredibly supportive and wonderful data of the advances of our school system, and the investments our district has made into student support, student services, academics, PBIS. It is all one of the same. It supports our children every way, shape, and form we know how to, and the payoff is in the process. Thank you for your work.
I have one question for the high school. You're trying to, you're saying you're attempting to get more students to take the ACT. How does that be accomplished?
Well, I think what, what we're doing now is, at the ninth and 10th grade level, they have to take the, excuse me, at the ninth, at the ninth grade level, they take the Explore Test, and then at the 10th and 11th grade, they take the Plan Test, so it's those tests in sequence.
Sure.
And what we want to do is open the eyes to students who may not necessarily say, okay, I'm focused on going to a four-year school. We want to give them this data and say, if you were to have taken the ACT, this is where you would have fallen on it. That's just one section of that report. And then, also included in that report, there is a career wheel that we can start to have those conversations with the sophomores in their sophomore planning conferences, which are being held this month. So, it's a, it's a good tool to not only talk about academics with the kids and say, I understand where you're at with your goals academically, and hopefully have some conversations about, you have more doors open to you than you may realize.
Sure.
And then also, like I said, that career wheel at the very bottom of that report is very useful for a student who may come into one of those conferences and says, I'm not really sure what I want to do. I'm not sure if I want to go to a four-year school, or if I want to go to a tech school, or I just don't know. That, that is a good starting point in itself, and then you can refer them to tools like Miss Careers, where you can have them do some self-exploration and take some additional assessments there. So, it's, it's a really powerful tool. I'm glad that we've dedicated ourselves as a district to that data, and I think that we'll, we'll see some positive results, not only from, you know, the kids seeing those numbers, but also in the curriculum decisions that we'll be able to make based off of, you know, nine through 11, taking that assessment.
In addition to that, I kind of think there's a statement that's attached to the ACT that it's just for those kids going to college.
Sure.
And to piggybacking off of what Andy says, that test has so much more to offer, but now being able to show them the Plan and Explore encourages them to take the ACT because they want to continue with that, and it doesn't really have that statement here.
Yeah.
They're kind of getting used to it now. It's part of what they do.
Sure.
And I think that alone, it's just more comfortable to sign up for it, so they can get that additional information. It's not just so much for that college student anymore. It's opening their options.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, I agree.
Well, this is a significant recognition, and I knew that before tonight, but I had no idea how limited those recognitions were across the state. So, I think just by virtue of the number of schools that we have represented in front of you tonight, really says something for the dedication of this group of professionals, because this is not something they're required to do. They take this on themselves, and it, you know, I know the pictures look pretty, and, you know, it's a nice little piece, but it really takes time to put all of that information together. So, I want to thank you, all of you tonight. I have some recognition certificates for you for appreciation for the work that you do, Jamie, and I'm going to warn you, my hands are cold.
Okay. Thank you.
Congratulations, John. High School. Christina. Thank you.
We need to, yeah, we need to recognize, I think, Danny as well.
Yes, thank you.
Because we would not have ever taken on this daunting task if she would not have been our cheerleader to say, we can do this. We went to a conference, and then we spent all summer, and not that we weren't excited. But Danny really did keep us excited about it, and as we got into it, and we're not required to do it. And that second-year piece, again, we were a little more excited because we wanted to take that next step, and that really is all thanks to Danny for giving us that encouragement.
Thank you, Danny.
And Vicki Albright, I have to give her in on this. She said, that woman knew the rubric almost better than we did. She called and told us that we were missing her, there was a part, and she was really a phenomenal piece of helping us pull this together. So, I don't want either of them to go in the wrong.
Thank you.
And our hardware is right here. We have our trophies and certificates.
Oh.
Oh.
Wow.
You guys are going to have to do better than this.
See the hardware?
They got hardware.
Thank you.
The next on the agenda under reports is the Facility Phase Two update for Core Planning Team, of which Mr. Mortimer, Mr. McDevon, and myself are a part of. We've met four times since December, the most recent being on the 21st of February. At that time, you were presented with preliminary options that we are going to forward to the board. We're meeting in tomorrow to review the cost estimates from the preliminary options, and also to discuss the educational impact of different elementary grade-level configurations. The Core Planning Team is going to come to the board with preliminary options and discussion on March the 18th. Please note that, that is next Monday. That's a special meeting that will be here at the high school. Also, look for April 4th, the Core Planning Team will be meeting to identify the pros and cons of the options that will be discussed on the 18th, and then on April 15th. Board members, please note that, on April 15th, the Core Planning Team is going to come back to the board again. So, we've got that meeting on the 18th, a special board meeting, and another special board meeting on the 15th. We are also going to look at scheduling some after-school meetings with district staff in their respective buildings to share those preliminary options and address any questions that come from the staff. And then, in May, we're looking at setting up a number of community workshops, probably three of them, a couple of evening sessions, and then one at the, one here at the high school, and one at the middle school, and then possibly a daytime one at the civic center. So, we will keep the community apprised as to what those dates are and where they will be at, and the board is certainly welcome to be part of those community listening sessions, and also the members of the Core Planning Team. So, that's the update on the facility study. And I don't know if anybody has any questions, or if Mr. Mortimer or Mr. McDevon would like to add anything to what I recorded on? No? Okay, thank you. Brings us then to reports, the 2013-2014 budget forecast, and for that, I'm going to turn to our Director of Business Services, Ms. Baldwin.
Nothing but good news, Martha. We had a deal.
Can only work so much magic. So, all of the board members received these three scenarios in an email. The reason I'm passing out paper copies is there was one number change on the back of the last scenario, so I just want to make sure everyone had the most current version. So, if we look, I want to kind of take everyone down line by line, just so we understand what the numbers are, and then we can flip through to the second and third scenarios. So, on the right-hand side of your sheet, in the 13-14 column, that's the numbers you want to look at. 11-12 are audited, 12-13 is our current budget, and then 13-14 is what we're looking at tonight based on projections. So, the first line, enrollment growth, in all three of these scenarios, we are projecting a flat enrollment, so that's why it's at 0%. The second line, per pupil increase, that's the number that's going to change between each of these scenarios. So, this first one is a $0 increase. The second one will be a $100 increase, and the third, 150. So, that, that number, you'll see change on each sheet. Another assumption is for equalized valuation. We're assuming a 0% growth. Last year, we actually saw a decrease, so this would be positive if we saw a 0% increase, but that's our assumption for right now. So, with those assumptions in mind, our fund-10 revenues projecting with a $0 per pupil increase on the revenue cap is the $29.7 million. Our fund-10 expenditures, based on assumptions listed below, this is not including any salary increase, and that assumption is kept the same throughout all three scenarios. We're assuming a 0.5% increase to WRS contribution, both on the employee and employer side. Because that happens at January 1st of every year, I cut that in half, so it's a 0.25% increase. And then, a 5% increase in health insurance, again, our renewal is on January 1st, so we don't only actually see half of that increase, so I use a 2.5 and a half, 2.5% increase for health insurance. Again, those three assumptions are the same throughout all three scenarios. So, based on those assumptions, fund-10 expenditures right now are projecting at almost an even $30 million. With those two numbers in mind, that sets us up for a deficit of approximately $230,000, which would take our fund balance down, assuming our fund balance is accurate in our 12-13 budget, which is obviously not going to be exact, but it should be close. It would take us down to just under $4.1 million, which equates to 13.59% of our expenditures.
Which are a lot, which are a few of 15.
15, yes. Our tax levy would be approximately $12.7 million, and the tax rate would be 8.42. Yes.
So, a couple of the comments about some of these numbers. The per pupil increase that you have, the second number is set at zero, and that's currently the governor's proposed budget.
Correct.
Okay. Then, we've made an assumption to increase the WRS because we know that's going up. We know healthcare is going up, and we put in a 5% guess, even though our last one was 8%. So, that's a fairly basic, and we didn't put anything in there for salaries because we just wanted to show where we stand on revenues and budget items as we have them right now.
Correct, yes.
That, that's not implying that we're going to do absolutely nothing, it's just saying this is where we're starting from, and right now, we're starting in a hole, by $230,000 if there is no per pupil increase.
Yes.
Now, the school-based tax levy, the levy amount, it's got a $0 amount, but really all that does is change, that doesn't change any revenues coming in at all. Let's say our levy did go up, and the valuation of this commodity increased, that doesn't change our revenue coming in at all.
No, because of the revenue cap.
It just, it just spreads it out differently.
Correct.
So, the 12.7 million and the 8.42 are just kind of relative figures based on, and they really become the last figures that we put out there.
Right.
At the end of the budget process.
And for instance, if equalized value goes up, our tax rate would go down.
Right. So, it would make us look better in comparison.
Yes.
But it doesn't change our revenues nor our expenditures.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Are there any other questions on any of these line items?
You're going to cover all three?
Yes.
I've got some questions.
Sure, yeah.
You only question them.
Yes. So, for scenario two, as highlighted in yellow at the top, this is the $100 increase to the revenue cap. Again, it's really just the second line that I've changed, the $100, but then it does flow through all the way to the bottom. So, our revenues would go up to just over $30 million, so approximately equal to our expenditures. So, this is kind of a break-even scenario, although assuming that's no salary increases, which, as Mr. McDevon pointed out, isn't necessarily
We need to, yeah, we need to recognize, I think Danny as well.
Yes, thank you.
Because we would not have ever taken on this daunting task if she would not have been our cheerleader to say, "We can do this." We went to a conference and then we spent all summer, and not that we weren't excited. But Danny really did keep us excited about it and as we got into it, and we're not required to do it, and that second year piece, again, we were a little more excited because we wanted to take that next step, and that really is all thanks to Danny for giving us that encouragement. And Vicki Albright, I have to give her in on this, she said, that woman knew the rubric almost better than we did. She'd call and tell us that we were missing or there was a part, and she was really a phenomenal piece of helping us pull this together, so I don't want either of them to go in the dark.
Thank you.
And our hardware is right here. Our cookies and stuff are here.
Oh.
Oh.
Wow.
You guys are gonna have to be better than the state.
That's how apparently the legislation.
See the hardware?
They got hardware.
Thank you.
The next on the agenda under reports is the facility phase two update for 2019. Mr. Mortimer, McKenna and myself are a part of. We've met four times since December, the most recent being on the 21st of February. At that time, you were presented with preliminary options that we are going to forward to the board for meeting in tomorrow to review the cost estimates from the preliminary options, and also to discuss the educational income gap of different elementary grade level configurations. The core planning team is going to come to the board with preliminary options and discussion on March the 18th. Please note that, that is next Monday. That's a special meeting will be here at the high school. Also, look for April 4th, the core planning team will be meeting to identify the pros and cons of the options that will be discussed on the 18th, and then on April 15th. Board members please note that, on April 15th, the core planning team is gonna come back to the board again. So we've got that meeting on the 18th, a special board meeting, and another special board meeting on the 15th. We are also going to look at scheduling some after-school meetings with district staff in their respective buildings to share those preliminary options and address any questions that come from the staff. And then, in May, we're looking at setting up a number of community workshops, probably three of them, a couple of evening sessions, and then one at the, one here at the high school, and one at the middle school, and then possibly a daytime one at the civic center. So we will keep the community apprised as to what those dates are and where they will be at, and the board is certainly welcome to be part of those community listening sessions, and also the members of the core planning team. So that's the update on the facility study, and I don't know if anybody has any questions, or if Mr. Mortimer or Mr. McKenna would like to add anything to, uh, record it on? No? Okay, thank you. Brings us then to reports, the 2013-2014 budget forecast, and for that, I'm going to turn to our Director of Business Services, Ms. Baldwin.
Nothing but good news, Martha. We had a deal.
Can only work so much magic. So all of the board members received these three scenarios in an email. The reason I'm passing out paper copies is there was one number change on the back of the last scenario, so I just wanted to make sure everyone had the most current version. So if we look, I wanna kinda take everyone down line by line, just so we understand what the numbers are, and then we can flip through to the second and third scenarios. So on the right-hand side of your sheet, in the 13-14 column, that's the numbers you wanna look at. 11-12 are audited, 12-13 is our current budget, and then 13-14 is what we're looking at tonight based on projections. So the first line, enrollment growth, in all three of these scenarios, we are projecting a flat enrollment, so that's why it's at zero percent. The second line, per pupil increase, that's the number that's gonna change between each of these scenarios. So this first one is a zero dollar increase, the second one will be a hundred dollar increase, and the third a hundred and fifty, so that number you'll see change on each sheet. Another assumption is for equalized valuation, we're assuming a zero percent growth. Last year, we actually saw a decrease, so this would be positive if we saw a zero percent increase, but that's our assumption for right now. So with those assumptions in mind, our fund ten revenues projecting with a zero dollar per pupil increase on the revenue cap is the twenty-nine point seven million dollars. Our fund ten expenditures, based on assumptions listed below, this is not including any salary increase, and that assumption is kept the same throughout all three scenarios. We're assuming a point five percent increase to WRS contribution, both on the employee and employer's side. Because that happens at January 1st of every year, I cut that in half, so it's a point two-five percent increase. And then, a five percent increase in health insurance, again, our renewal is on January 1st, so we don't only actually see half of that increase, so I use a two point five and a half, two and a half percent increase for health insurance. Again, those three assumptions are the same throughout all three scenarios. So based on those assumptions, fund ten expenditures, right now, are projecting at almost an even thirty million dollars. With those two numbers in mind, that sets us up for a deficit of approximately two-hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which would take our fund balance down, assuming our fund balance is accurate in our 12-13 budget, which is obviously not gonna be exact, but it should be close. It would take us down to just under four point one million dollars, which equates to thirteen point five nine percent of our expenditures.
Which are a lot, which are a few about fifteen.
Fifteen, yes. Our tax levy would be approximately twelve point seven million dollars, and the tax rate would be eight point four-two. Yes.
So, a couple of the comments about some of these numbers. The per pupil increase that you have, the second number is set at zero, and that's currently the governor's proposed budget.
Correct.
Okay. Then, we've made an assumption to increase the WRS because we know that's going up, we know healthcare is going up, and we put in a five percent guess, even though our last one was eight percent. So that's a fairly basic, and we didn't put anything in there for salaries, 'cause we just wanted to show where we stand on revenues and budget items as we have them right now.
Correct, yes.
That's not implying that we're gonna do absolutely nothing, it's just saying, this is where we're starting from, and right now, we're starting in a hole, by two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars if there is no per pupil increase.
Yes.
Now, the school-based tax levy, the levy amount, it's got a zero dollar amount, but really, all that does is change, that doesn't change any revenues coming in at all. Let's say our levy did go up, and the valuation of this community increased, that doesn't change our revenue coming in at all.
No, because of the revenue cap.
It just, it just spreads it out differently.
Correct.
So, the twelve point seven million and the eight forty-two are just kinda relative figures based on, and they really become the last figures that we put out there.
Right.
At the end of the budget process.
And for instance, if equalized value goes up, our tax rate would go down.
Right. So it would make us look better.
Tax levy would stay the same.
In comparison.
Yes.
But it doesn't change our revenues, nor our expenditures.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Are there any other questions on any of these line items?
You're gonna cover all three?
Yes.
I've got some questions.
Sure, yeah. Yes.
You only question them.
Yes. So, for scenario two, as highlighted in yellow at the top, this is the hundred dollar increase to the revenue cap. Again, it's really just the second line that I've changed, the hundred dollars, but then it does flow through all the way to the bottom. So our revenues would go up to just over thirty million dollars, so approximately equal to our expenditures. So this is kind of a break-even scenario, although assuming that's no salary increases, which, as Mr. McKenna pointed out, isn't necessarily the way we wanna go, but we have to start from somewhere, so. The mill levy would go up to tw- just under thirteen million dollars, and the rate would be eight point five-seven. And then the final scenario is a hundred and fifty dollar increase to the revenue cap. This would bump our revenues up to thirty point one million dollars, which would leave us with a surplus of just over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It would get our fund balance back up to almost that fifteen percent, and our tax levy would be thirteen point one million with a rate of eight point six-seven.
For context, is it fair to say, historically, that the per pupil increase going previous to 11-12 was two to two hundred dollars? Isn't that historically what the per pupil increase was when we were in that?
I have to defer to the director of the school.
And I believe what some of the legislators are proposing now is the hundred and fifty.
That's what Pete Olson and Mike Ellis, the senators, are proposing.
That's why we ran all three scenarios.
Absolutely. Good point. I mean, I sent some questions, and obviously, I know some of these are difficult to answer at this point, but whenever we get the budget from the state, it's a two-year deal, so it's not just 213-14, it's 214-25. Do we have any type of feel, you know, like, if I'm saying that I'm two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars under the current governor's budget behind, where would we be even a year later, or be even worse? Typically?
Typically, yes. I can run those numbers in the model, I haven't yet because, just, we don't have any salary figures in there.
Yeah, I know.
Projecting salary increases, but we can certainly run those numbers and have those ready for the board.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I, again, I mean, it just, the natural progression would say that, you know, if there's something that may occur, and there may be cuts that may have to occur, or we go further into fund balance, which we don't wanna do.
Right.
And salaries, like, a new point that may become, and in the current environment, that may not be good to keep quality people here. Of course, everybody in the state may be facing the same issue. It's gonna be worse even the second year.
Correct.
And then, our, I mean, basically, healthcare costs are increasing four hundred thousand dollars per year, ballpark. So, so by doing nothing, we start off next year, four hundred thousand dollars in the hole. Yeah, if we were two hundred thousand dollars below this year, the next year, six hundred thousand wouldn't be out of the question, the further.
The other thing that just doesn't show is the IRS regulations have not come out for the federal healthcare reform, and so, as Martha indicated, our program plans, our renewal dates are January 1st. We don't know what the implementation guidelines are going to be, it could be 2014, it could be 2015, but that will obviously have an impact on our budget as well.
Yeah, and obviously, the second question, and I know that one may be a bit of a form to get our hands wrapped around as far as the cost, is, we always hear about unfunded mandates, and no child left behind, labor, required additional requirements on school districts. We are forging ahead with those, and I think we're showing leadership in many of those areas, but there's many of the things that are involved in that that require cost, and some of that's professional development, some of that is the management of the testing procedures and so forth. And, you know, when we throw this and we say, "Here, here it is," the state says, "Here it is," then we're stuck in saying, "Well, you've given us these additional things, but you're not doing anything to help us with that." And so, that's something I think we should at least be able to come back to our legislators and say, "This is the dollars that it's costing us." And for us to maintain those things, like with our professional developments, whether it's on Wednesdays or whatever else we do, these are the things we need to continue to raise that bar, and we want to continue to raise that bar, but we need to have the resources to do that.
Right, and I'll be working with Ms. Miller to kind of figure out what those unfunded mandates might be.
Okay, cool, thank you. And this is, you know, for the board members, this is just the, this is the dance that happens every year when it comes to budget time. We always have to take a look, start somewhere, where are we at, what are the assumptions? You know, our budget process is so convoluted, and it's such a drawn-out affair that we make assumptions basically weekly, monthly, as we work our way through it. And so, we just kinda wanted to give you a first blush, to show you where it's at. It hasn't changed a whole lot, but we're gonna be starting to drop in some numbers, refine it. Clearly, we wanna advocate for as much dollars as we can to come into the district, because a zero budget increase does not help us. It's not a sustainable model. So, you know, as you do talk to your legislators, or get an opportunity, feel free to bring that up to them, but we just wanted to give you that first blush.
Martha and I do plan to write a letter to our legislators now that we know the impact on our budget, and we can be specific about how that might impact the area of the school district.
I would just like to add that I think it's equally important that we communicate this to our parents, and guardians, to our community, through our local media networks, that this is the consequence of budget decisions in the state capital to disenfranchise public education to support choice schools. These are the consequences, and nobody should walk away without a knowledge of what those consequences are to the children of public education in the state of Wisconsin, and specifically in the district of Baraboo. We may go through this budget process every year, but the last two years have been atypical from any other budget-a-year process, and our constituents need to be aware of what those consequences are.
Martha, is there, like, is there an assumption of a percentage of interest that we accrue on the fund balance?
Interest rates are so low, that is, no.
Have anything there?
I mean, we have a little, but it's a couple thousand dollars. Not really.
Copy machine revenue is more than they change.
Quite possibly.
Probably a lot more.
Quite possibly.
Okay, any further questions on the update for the budget forecast? If not, next item on the agenda is the energy service company selection process, and I will bring it to Martha for an update on that.
Sure, thanks. So I just wanted to bring the board up to date on where we are on this process. Some of this might be repeat information, but I wanna make sure everyone's aware. On February 1st, we did send out the RFQ to thirteen energy service corporations. On February 6th, we had a, we offered a walkthrough to all of the firms, six of them did attend that walkthrough. On February 18th, RFQs were due back to the central office, we received seven RFQs. From the 18th to about the 27th, a committee reviewed RFQs to determine who would move forward to the interview process, and out of that committee, three firms were selected, H&amp;H Energy Services Incorporated, McKinstry, and ESG Honeywell. They were all notified on the 28th, and I've been in contact with them since then as well, but the interviews for those three firms are scheduled for the board meeting on the 25th, and there's a potential to select a firm that evening, but I also said we might, or the board might not make a decision until the 8th, so we're not locked into making a decision immediately that evening. We don't feel.
Any board members have a conflict with the 25th, just so that I can get a sense of who will and who won't be here?
25th of December.
Yes.
So with the exception of Mr. Viedro, everyone else concerned at this point?
And I would provide written review of the three that have provided.
Okay, thanks Martha.
The only thing I would add is that the committee that Martha referenced, everybody did their independent reviews of the RFQs and brought their three pies forward, and it was the consensus that we found among those firms that were selected that really ended up with the three that we'll be interviewing on the 25th.
Did that all three of them?
Yes.
Okay, so if there's nothing more on that update, again, I'll bring Martha for agenda under reports, Devil's Head versus Town of Merrimack litigation.
At the beginning of the month, the district was notified by the attorney representing the town of Merrimack regarding litigation, that they are defending against Devil's Head Resort. The resort is requesting that their property value be reassessed to a value of six million dollars less than it is now. The town has to defend the litigation, but they're asking the district if we would also like to participate in the defense. Some of you might recall that the district was involved in similar litigation in December of 1992, and the litigation costs at that time were shared between the town, the county, and the district. After further conversation with the Department of Public Instruction confirming that the financial net effect to the district's revenues of any reassessment of property value would be zero, it would be my recommendation that the district do not participate in this litigation.
The reason we participated in 92 is before the revenue caps, so that did make a difference. Now that we're locked, it doesn't make the, it doesn't have a direct impact on the school district.
The property owner is asking for a six million dollar reduction in valuation, do we know what the total number is to start with?
I can get that number for us. I've also, I've also received some reports on what part is in the district, but it's kinda hard to sort through, but I wanted to try and find that number as well, so.
'Cause there's a large portion of it, isn't there a portion of it that's obviously in some other schools?
I think we will.
Sock, Sock Merrimack School District.
Right.
A charred school.
Was there, do you know if there was a request for the school district to stop taking on litigation?
I'm not aware of that.
'Cause I'm not sure why they would be asking us to, and certainly, the majority of the property is not in our district.
There's a large portion of the property that's in our district, I don't know how much of it's developed land, and that's why the town of Merrimack sent us parcel by parcel. So it's page after page of numbers, so we have to sort through that, but, you know, at this point, with the way that the revenue is set up for a district, it really doesn't make sense for the district to participate in litigation, incur legal expenses, when the outcome is, either way, is not going to impact us directly. But we thought you should be advised of it, since that request was made.
Well, it does impact, I mean, it doesn't impact our budget, but it does impact our stakeholders.
Yes.
You know, clearly, when you take six million dollars valuation, and I'm not even sure that whole six million dollars, I mean, that's one piece of the puzzle that we're missing.
Right.
We don't know if we represent six hundred thousand dollars of the six million, or if we represent five point nine and six million dollars, but you take that much out, and clearly, there's an impact to our stakeholders. I think we should, you know, I, obviously, I support your recommendation, but I think we should have a more clear understanding of exactly what that impact is to our stakeholders. So, I know it's, it's a little extra work to try to track that down, but the township should be able to tell us what kind of valuation of that six million dollars is ours, because if it's all the ski lodge and the developed land, and none of that's in our district, and all we've got is, you know, forty acres of forest, well...
Sure.
Well, I think that's with those multiple pages, like each parcel, so we have to go through.
Yeah.
So, would be thus, Mr. McKenna, you can motion to table and show we can have more information?
No, I, no, that's more for my satisfaction, I mean, that's more for my general understanding, because I think there is an impact to our constituents, but the true direct impact to our constituents would be us writing a check for fifty thousand dollars to an attorney. So, you know, I'm not gonna support, I'm not gonna support stepping into the lawsuit, but I do wanna have a better understanding of the impact that we can talk about.
Well, and of course, the town of Merrimack are required to defend litigation, they don't have a choice.
Right. Martha, can we motion in order to respond to that?
I don't believe so.
Brings us to media school improvements, and I'm the staff with us tonight, our media specialist, provide some information regarding their roles and the impact on the state of student achievement, so I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm Kelly Steiner, I am the library media specialist at Jack Young Middle School, have been there since the year 2000. And, when I say that, it just kinda hits me all of a sudden, and, this is my colleague, Lawrence Gillik.
Hi, I'm Lawrence Gillik, and I'm the media specialist here at the high school, and I've been looking forward to having the words that some of you have spoken with in the past, but glad to be here and talk a little bit about my position and what Kelly and I are working together to do.
So we wanted to come, I know you'll be discussing more about opposition, and we wanted to come and just tell you what, what our positions are like. We're far from the days of Mary and the librarian, and I had to say, I had to explain that to them, because they didn't know who that was. But I'm gonna assume y'all know who that is.
I don't know.
No, no, that's no comment.
Can you sing it?
If you really want to. But I, I took something today from the program that both Lawrence and I went through to be trained as certified library media specialists. I just wanted to let you know, this is from the UW Systems School Library Education Consortium webpage, called "What Does a School Library Information Specialist Do?" And we do things like develop and organize information resources and educate students and teachers to find, evaluate, use, and manage information. We select and provide access to a wide range of materials and technologies to support the curriculum and foster the recreational and imaginative, as well as educational needs of students. We assist and teach students and their teachers to use information technology and develop those 21st century literacy skills that you're hearing so much about. We are certified and licensed teachers, as well as specially trained in library information studies. So, this is, we got a lot of training going on here.
Yeah, sure. So, the last three years that I was working in schools, I was at an elementary and middle school, not far from here in the Dells, and I liked my position there, but I really have loved the high school level, and my work with students on research and finding school, or finding reading not just for school, but for their personal life, and engaging them with text, whether it's what we can find here in the stacks, and if they can't find it, they're so used to trying to just giving up right away if they can't find something in the search, but I have experienced a lot of success connecting them with reliable online information, and also, even still print text, I mean, I take requests for magazines often. Do you read and jump in?
You're saying not everything online is reliable?
That's correct.
Learn something every day.
Yep, unfortunately, that's, that is a serious focus that we do have to work on with some of the, with some students, who's, who have actually come, and I saw at the elementary level that often, it wasn't just the students, but their parents would be ingraining in them that they could trust, you know, without question, a lot of online things. So it's a harder battle sometimes than, than we sitting in this room kind of can understand at times, so, that's one of my things, did you wanna add something?
Sure, what, we, we really do focus on both the literacy and reading parts of going to school, and also, technology and 21st century literacy skills. For me, this was very hard, I just wanna preface this, and I think, Lawrence, this was hard to say, you only have a few minutes and only pick a few things to say. You know, our job is a million things in a day. I, for literacy, in my job, one of the things I am really privileged to be able to do is meet with every language arts class, plus several special ed language arts classes, every week to give book talks to them, whether it has to do with something that they're studying that week, or just new books that we have, or something I think that they would love to read, just to get, I'm the one who chooses the books for the library, so I know what's there, and I know what they might be missing, and I just want to get it, get it out there and encourage them to look further than what they may have looked for before. I also run a book club, a small book club, called Read On Wisconsin, I happen to be part of the Read On Wisconsin State Advisory Board, and I have some of the narrators who meet once a week. We have a monthly book that we read, they actually can read it if they want to, they can skip a month if they're a little behind. And then, the students, we talk about the books, we blog about the books, and they do technology projects on iPads, using different apps that we have on iPads, to make book trailers for the books. And we have submitted some to the state website, and they've been accepted, so we have some of our... So we have some of our students work up on the state website. And then I also do special library literacy events. If there's a, there's a book that was popular and opening as a movie, I'll do some sort of big event. Or we, every year I do a Newberry event during the week when the Newberry is announced. Or if there happens to be something in the news, I will, you know, a big sporting event or the Rose Bowl or Super Bowl again maybe someday. We'll do, you know, I'll do events surrounding that and connect it to reading and the books that we have in our library.
And so, as my goal has switched from elementary and middle to high school, I have found that with such a broad range of tools at my disposal, and staff and students both alike really can feel overwhelmed understandably by all of these, all this information. So I'm focused on being very efficient with what I provide, and technology, my comfort with technology often helps that go pretty smoothly. And our, and coming into this district with such a great, efficient technology program, really quality hardware, and then free software that Google provides, I have just been in a state of nirvana most of the time. As frustrating as it can be, just compared to what I have experienced, this is really nice. So, I'm efficiently providing tools and resources, and I do, I just love the hands-on, working with the teachers and students in the classroom. Tomorrow I have every period of the day with one English class or another doing research development with their kids. And depending on the staff member, I mean, they're different, they're comfortable with different parts of the research project. One teacher says, please teach them the MLA format for citations. The other one says, I'm going to cover MLA format citations, can you cover the databases? And then another says, I got those too, but I need, I need you to help them understand what's reliable and what isn't. So, all three of those things, I get a little sampling of instructing kids and seeing where they're at with those things. So that's in the classroom. And then I have for the kids who are reluctant readers, they and most staff are aware of a form on the high school website that asks them a series of questions. What are you interested in? What's your, what's your general reading level? And, you know, what are a couple of topics that you might like to read about? So they can provide a minimal amount of information, they send it to me, I get a notification every time a student does that, and myself and my other library staff members put our heads together, we grab a textbook from inside the library or a magazine article, or we go online and look through archives in our databases. Doesn't matter what the kid is looking for, whether it's welding or, you know, training horses, I can find an article or two that is about those topics. So I just love those opportunities. And incorporate, you know, an iPad and an interactive book, and some of those reluctant readers are reading without even realizing that they're delving into a book, they see it as just a lot more interactive.
One of the best things that, or one of the most fun things I get to do is also work with teachers to help them understand the different tools that we have available with us, and then also help the students as they're using those tools to develop products to show their learning. And one of the things that we're most proud of this year, we are, we took the leap, and we're going to be integrating ebooks into both the middle school and the high school libraries. So student, because we've noticed so many students are using e-reads, and so we want to make some options developed for those students as well.
And talking about efficiency, that's going to eliminate not only losing books and having them turned in late, and having families acquire late fees, or tracking them down with staff time to track down a high schooler or even, you know, any grade level student to return the book that they completely forgot they had checked out. Well, these ebooks never can be turned in late, never can be lost, and when they request the book, it can be here in a matter of hours, as opposed to weeks, where a student's waiting for the third book in a series, and I got to wait until it comes out, and then I got to order it and wait for it to arrive here, and by then they've kind of gotten over that whole series. This is going to be immediate, and it's going to be efficient, and I'm really looking forward to that, adding that to my toolbox of engaging reading.
And it will also be available all summer long.
Ebook takes hours to get here? Doesn't it take less time to get, I mean, shouldn't it be...
Well...
What the heck, you know?
Do we have to talk to Matt? Do we have to talk to Matt and speed things up?
No, it's with the company. Once we do the order, it would take...
There's still room to improve, but there's still room to improve.
You know, Kelly, with the plethora of information you brought forth, I'm always amazed when I talk to you about the passion that you bring, because it's the heart and soul of this place right here. And I guess, you know, I'd never want to forget how important that is for those children to get those books. You know, I happen to know a little middle school girl who was so danged that they could cite it because she won a contest. I got second place, but I still got the first place book. So, you know, just that interaction means a big deal, and that passion that you two bring means a big deal every day.
Thank you.
And on the flip side, I felt really welcomed by the community, and looking at the collection and the history of a lack of challenges to the collection, you know, just, I feel a sense of, and working with Penny Johnson at the public library, I just can tell that the community values access to information, therefore values libraries, and so that really makes me feel excited to continue what I do.
Yeah, going to, looking at one study here from Library Research Services. Yeah, we are in nirvana, I guess. But, but the purpose that we want to have nirvana with librarians and media specialists is that we get improved reading scores as a result. We have teachers who understand what they need to get the information, and whether it's a different pathway, you give a multiple pathways, and that will reduce staff losses. And, you know, it will keep teachers longer, and turnover is a serious issue in many, many school districts in the state of Wisconsin. And so what you do, some people may equate a dollar figure to it, but really in the end, it equates into the academic achievement that we want. And it's one of those things that you can't really sometimes get your hands around on the cost, but in the end, you spend a dollar now, you save yourself ten dollars later type of thing. I appreciate all the work you're doing, I think you're doing a great job, and, you know, and again, it's that passion which I think will hopefully make our decision easier later on in the evening, which you're going to stick around for that in case we have any other questions.
Well, it's snowy, and we both live out of town, so...
Is there anything you'd like to add about, you know, Kelly's been here long enough that she's seen our elementary media program change, and in the past, we've had an elementary media specialist oversee the programs in all of our elementary schools, which has really set that individual up for becoming quickly burned out and overwhelmed scheduling themselves in all of the buildings. Currently, we have library assistants in our elementary schools, but what we want to talk about is bringing this type of professionalism and training and expertise to our elementary programs as well. Kelly oversees the budgets and the ordering, and works with the library assistants, as do the elementary principals, but there is definitely a piece there missing.
Do you want to maybe address that piece that we're missing at this point, and then I can ask others?
Well, the piece I, while, you know, the library assistants are doing a great job of what they do, but the piece that is missing is, is the teaching piece, is the ability to make those, have that expertise, have what a certified or an endorsed library media specialist or a certified teacher brings to any school or any district. I think my, I think, think if you asked my staff, they would say that I bring a certain intangible piece there that, because they can come to me when they have questions, I can co-teach with them, and I've often felt that that is, that is the biggest thing that teachers and students at the elementary school are missing. They're missing out on developing those skills at an even younger age, and having access to somebody with the training and the knowledge to help them develop as learners and as consumers of information.
I believe you're being modest when you say I think, I bet you it's I know.
Well, I don't know.
Kelly?
Absolutely, absolutely.
The, for me, both as a member of the board and as a parent of two young women in our school district, as well as two grownups, the difference for me at this phase in the education life of young people can be summarized in single words of what your profession's about, and that is discernment. With the availability of iPads, iPods, phones, this wired world, as you've indicated, any piece of information that comes through that source, they believe is real. Same way that young people used to watch TV and Mr. Magoo was real, and ninety-three percent of the population thought that Marcus Welby, M.D., was a real doctor. So we have to, as educators, be incredibly astute at helping our young people make connections, and that's really what you're doing as both a generalist of all sources of information and a specialist in helping young people discern the difference between what is real and just what's out there. Because they'll need to make, not just young children, all of us.
Absolutely, everybody, yeah. And I think the younger that we can start that, and that we can start that training and start them thinking with those critical thinking skills, the better.
I would add to your word of efficiency. For me, effectiveness, and I think Doug was getting at that as well, that being efficient is great, but if it's in the wrong area, it's meaningless. You are really focusing on the discernibility and effectiveness of helping our young people and our teachers connect about to understand the difference between appearance and reality. I think that's absolutely essential in this day and age.
And I want to thank you both for coming on short notice to be here tonight to talk about your roles, and if we left out anything, I did provide a job description that's several pages long that you can take a look at, as well as I'm sure Kelly or Lawrence would be happy to provide additional resources and information. So, thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just to first remember the agenda instead of personnel recommendations, and now we are in the current reservations, new hires for post-graduates. That brings us to the fill of the long-term substitute position for Alvin under two, Andrew Javer, making a mention to that. So, that brings my view of the second priority discussion. To be known, it isn't typically signified by someone. Aye. That brings us to the code. That brings us to the twenty thirteen fourteen staff meeting proposal.
I did provide a budget spreadsheet. I thought that was the best way to see the impact of some of the recommendations that we were making, both in terms of additions, reductions, and reallocations. And I'm going to let, here in a moment, John and Bill talk a little bit about what this will accomplish at their level. But some of the general information that I shared is, as you know, we're moving to block schedule next year. We're going to be providing more opportunities for students. Likewise, at both buildings, we're looking at very strategic and structured interventions for kids that are ongoing on a weekly basis. And so what you see in front of you here is really responsive to the enrollment that we had in those classes and those processes that staff are hoping to put in place next year. Now, as we do every year, we not only look at those things that we need, but we prioritize those needs, and we also look at staff positions that we may no longer need due to restructuring, due to efficiencies, and other things. So I'll let them talk to that as well. Bill, do you want to start us out and kind of work down the back of it?
Sure. Well, you know, it kind of goes back to some things that we discussed last year when we came forward with the proposal to increase graduation requirements and associated need for the block schedule. And at that time, I indicated to this board that we did not anticipate any net change in staffing at the high school, but as Crystal alluded to, you know, there is a need here to do a little bit of shipping around to try to hold true, you know, to that. So, you also will remember that our staff currently teach five classes per semester, so a total of each month of ten. Next year, we'll be teaching six classes a semester for each month of twelve, and of course, that means these teachers are able to teach additional sections, which at the moment, we're staying flat, would reduce the number that was required given the content area. So, the first one with regards to Spanish teacher not being able to be refilled, currently we, with the retirement of Martha Schilling forthcoming, we have Hannah Smith, who was hired last year to teach Spanish, not only here at the high school, but also does some world language teaching at Jack and Middle School as well. We believe that she can fulfill that vacancy created by normal, and that allows all of our staff in the world language department to be able to meet and use up the requests that may apply to students who are at the middle school. High school online coordinator in U-Hired, we have that position that's open as a result of Rhonda Compher's resignation, so that position still needs to be taken care of, and we're in conversation currently about what that position will look like in terms of the needs at both high school as well as at Jack and Middle School to expand opportunities for them as well. Due to the increased opportunities for students within the block schedule and the periods and selections that they have, our enrollments in elected areas, specifically within the areas of art and the consumer science, tech, and business and computer science have exploded. We've seen an increase anywhere between sixty to one hundred percent in most particular areas, and with that comes a need for us to add some staffing in the area of art, as well as bump up, bump up current contracts in the case from eighty-three, from three percent to one factory number to a hundred percent, and for another, it was currently sixty-seven percent to a hundred percent. It's also the reason as to why you see a request for our business computer science, one person on a full-time basis, they're first on a sixty-seven percent basis. Again, that's a result of our numbers within that particular department, those two departments, I should say, having doubled. And let's see, as far as other requests within that, we also have to meet for some overloads within the context of the family consumer science and tech, and again, tech saw a drastic increase in the number of students interested in taking those courses. So again, when you go over what's there, it's all a deal with the increase in that. And then we have a couple other areas where we're looking at reallocation. We have a parking out of content that we're recommending a reduction on because we don't feel that that position is any longer necessary. Since we've moved to, you know, assigned parking spots within the parking lot, that the needs of somebody to go around and make sure that people are parking in spots and have a parking permit really is kind of unnecessary because it's a self-reason type situation. If a student or car is parked in somebody else's spot, we know about it, because that individual who owns that spot or is leasing or renting or however they look at that spot lets us know that, so we know that they have a problem. But the problems we've had with regards to people parking illegally, you know, using our people's spots and so forth, that's been almost essentially eliminated as a result of that change. And high school library assistant, despite what we've heard, there's no doubt that there is so much more than what used to be done. We do feel like with the elimination of study halls here at the high school, that we can defy with only one library assistant currently at the high school library as opposed to the two we currently have in place. So those are the recommendations as they relate to the high school specifically. And John and I kind of go to rest of it with regards to middle school, those two are kind of, you know, they're both very much...
And Bill and I did spend a considerable amount of time working together to try to, you know, stamp both of our abilities as efficiently as possible. At the middle school, we are looking at moving from currently running twenty-eight sessions in the building, we'd like to run twenty-nine for the following reasons. It would allow us to create additional space for open enrollment requests at the sixth grade level. You remember a couple of meetings ago, we were basically locked down at two grade levels, we couldn't add anybody. This would allow us to add additional aid spots at the sixth grade level. It will allow us to address our priority areas of math and literacy, maintain current class sizes. It also allows us to expand online learning, which is a huge thing at the middle school, I think, as we move forward, which also allows us to keep kids who are currently enrolled, enrolled despite some changing circumstances. We, for example, worked with a young man today who had some serious needs that we needed to address, which we were able to do by patching together an online program for him to kind of blend his schedule. We are limited in our ability to do that at the moment, and moving forward in order to increase opportunities to both add students as well as keep students enrolled, we feel that that online piece is... as keep students enrolled, we feel that that online piece is an absolute necessity.
John, could you define sections?
Yeah, the number of sections that we run.
Is that like a class period or what?
No, it's the number of, like, for example, if we have a total of twenty, let's use, if we wanted to keep our class sizes at twenty-five, and we have two-hundred-and-fifty students, we have to run ten sections in order to make that happen, right? And if we were running the current number of sections that we have in the building right now, at the sixth grade level, our class sizes would jump up to about twenty-seven and a half. Currently, they're about twenty-four, and that makes a huge difference, not necessarily in one individual class, but you're teaching six classes, that certainly increases your workload, because you have to multiply that addition over that many class periods. So the number of sections is really determined by the enrollment that we have. In order to do that, we were going to be adding an eighth grade math position. That is not, that's not an increase of a full position there, because due to shifting of staff, we have some other staff who are currently teaching math, who will be teaching other things. So it's really only adding an additional section of math. We would also be increasing our music teacher. Currently, we have a music teacher at sixty percent to a hundred percent. That would be mainly to allow us to expand our online learning. She has a tech background as well. That would give us the opportunity to do that. The middle school language arts teacher, Bill and I worked with that, where we were able to cover that without increasing our request to add an additional staff member. We can share a staff member from the high school to do that, to cover the sections that we have available.
So when we say we're adding an additional math teacher, you're saying there's other teachers that are involved in the equation. We don't need the teacher's name, but do we know where that's going? Is it going into social study?
Yeah, one of the teachers will be going into it, they'd be teaching additional sections of science. And the other teacher will be teaching additional sections of online.
Okay, so when we look at this teacher, it is a math teacher, but the additional cost would be, is ethical to go there?
John, as I've sent out, it's budgeted as one FTE.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
But it's not an addition of one FTE.
It's not a person, but we are adding that amount in because people are being shocked.
But it's a reallocation, but it's not just math, it's a reallocation of the position.
Right.
Yeah, and we would have to do that no matter, you know, how many sections we run. We'd have to reallocate staff.
Yes. Even if I say, okay, forget it, we're going to twenty-eight, you still need to do it.
Right, we'd still have to allocate.
And, John, the reallocation happens in a process that involves the engagement of those that will be reallocated, conversations, negotiations, discussions, so that the end result of the process is everybody feels valued and happy, and nobody being told, do you need to do this or you don't have a job?
That is correct.
We've had lots of discussions. We've had whole building discussions, we've had department discussions, and we've had individuals. So whether we're looking at reducing a position, reallocating, or adding, we talk to all of those people that are impacted by those and ask for feedback. We do have a teacher who's come forward from the high school who would like to transfer to the middle school, and that is Jamie Spagnola. His initial reaction, he wasn't sure. He teaches some AP classes here, he's great with technology. He's indicated a desire to go to the middle school to help expand the online learning as well as teach some of the language arts. And I want to go back also to the library assistant. In our discussions with that individual, we've indicated that we are, we've made a commitment to that person to, as through attrition, and positions become open, whether in the library program or special ed position, that we want to try to shift that person into another role in the district. So we are trying to work with individuals and still place our student needs first. And so, I don't know if you want to talk anything else at the middle school?
No, but I just wanted to reiterate that we've had personal conversations with everybody.
I appreciate, you know, at the end of the day, we're all grownups and we have to make choices. And I just want to applaud the fact that we are committed, as a district and as educators, to work with our entire educational family and community to find as much of a win-win as we can. And there are limits to that, and at a certain point, everybody has to be a grownup. But I think we need to engage in that process, and I know that we are doing an excellent job in that area, and simply want to remind our constituents that that's what we do here.
Absolutely. Here's-
I have one question for John, and won't be long.
No question.
John, you got the elimination of the middle school educational assistants?
Yes.
I'm assuming one is a one FTE, that is a person?
Yes.
Just explain to me what goes in where it says reevaluation of the need of assistants. And I only ask that because I've always been one to believe that the educational assistants are a very good thing for our block, so to speak, as far as what we do in the district. So please explain to me the rationale for your reevaluation to so and so.
We looked at job responsibilities and what those people are currently doing and how we can make some of those more efficient. And, you know, in doing so, we realized that we can restructure our current EAs in a different way to meet our needs.
I think, too, the comment at the bottom of the spreadsheet really references more at the elementary level, where we have the largest number of assistants. And we've been noticing over the last couple of years a disparity between the buildings. And so what we would like to do is also look at ratios. So we're making sure that we're providing equitable resources across the district through our buildings. And we thought, in looking at, we met with the elementary principals and we talked about their needs at each of the buildings, and we felt at this point that there were two positions that we could eliminate at that level. But we'd like to continue the discussion, and through attrition and more efficiencies and defining those roles, continue to look at that area.
John, I see middle school assistants get one full-time employee at eighteen thousand, and elementary education assistants get two full-time for nineteen thousand. Do elementary educational assistants get a lot less money, or how's that, why is there only a-
It depends if they take benefits or not. And so because we've identified a specific individual at the, at the middle school, we were able to define that amount. And so I did, that's a good point, and I wanted to bring that up, that the figures that you see on the spreadsheet, if health benefits are part of that equation, those numbers are included in that dollar amount. And so, for example, if you have several three-hour educational systems, they do not qualify for benefits. So that amount would not be the same.
Then I got a couple more questions. This, Spagnola, is that the way you pronounce that?
Spagnola.
Yeah, he's coming up to the middle school.
That's correct.
How many students does he have at the high school, and what happens to those students?
How many students does he have?
Yeah.
How many students does English, I guess the better way to phrase it is how many students do the English department have, because they're not, they're all of our kids.
But Doug, doesn't he have class?
He has several classes, yeah. But the enrollment within the English department for next year here at the high school is down by about two percent, largely because the current incoming freshman class next year is small, it's one-hundred-and-ninety-eight students. The outgoing senior class is about two-thirty-five. So the class is already smaller than the early student population at the high school. It'll already be smaller to begin with next year compared to where it is right now. Plus, then you take into consideration that every other member of the English department is teaching two additional sections, bumping down what they're teaching now. And that equates into an absolute wash in terms of class sizes and where those kids are going. Those students are actually being reallocated to remaining members of the department within the two additional sections that they'll be teaching.
Before you're doing the reallocation, Jamie, without any of these, um-
Yeah, and it has a net impact on class sizes, it'll remain. And right now, the average is twenty-two at the high school, except for a couple of the two classes. That is the lowest in the budget conference. If we didn't have blocks of intervention time for literacy at the high school, we'd be looking at cutting the position at the high school in addition to transferring Jamie to the middle school.
Well, we're able to do anything if you go with that, right?
Yes.
And that was the intent of our collaboration and working together with Crystal and everyone, the rest of the administrative team, and trying to make sure that we are utilizing the resources we have in the cost to the fullest, and also trying to make sure that people are still here.
Sure.
Also, on this information here, you have twenty-eight to twenty-nine enrollment. Does that mean, does that mean you have twenty-eight to twenty-nine students in that class?
No.
Those are section.
No, those are section numbers.
Those are sections?
Yeah, it's not, it's not class size.
Okay, gotcha.
I can give you the class sizes, but if we go to twenty-nine sections, it would be twenty-four at the sixth grade level, twenty-three at the seventh grade level, and twenty-five at the eighth grade level.
Without bringing any open?
Yeah.
All right, that's a good one. And that compares to the rest of that across the entire roll? I think that might be higher.
I'm not able to answer that question.
Okay.
I would guess it's pretty comparable.
Crystal, I have a few questions here, too. I understand the need for the staff and stuff like that, but I'm looking at for budgeting position there. Right here, you've got X back, actually, you've got that forty-five, two over before, and also addition in there, you have thirty-six thousand five on health insurance savings. So basically, you've got about eighty-one seven on increases over last year's staffings. I'm right, I think this week-
If you took the insurance savings out when the teacher's contract is-
Right. So increase over last year's staffing, so if you've got a zero increase as far as funding and stuff like this.
Yeah.
If we go with the more staffing, that money has to come from somewhere. That's what I'm worried about.
Lead me to it here. I was going to say that we really need to move forward now with the middle school, high school piece, which actually has no impact on the budget when you take those pieces. But perhaps the board would choose to table the discussion on the media specials until we have firmer numbers on our budget. That way, what we've done here is shift resources around, having that impact, but maybe not acting on the media specialist. If you do that, we're twenty-some thousand dollars to the good, to the positive.
But I remember this was about five, six, four, five years ago, when you had to make the deep cuts around, and we were going towards the end of the year, and I know you're very good at it, we're scrolling around and you-
Doing the best we can.
What's the timing of making a decision to table? Is there a recruitment cycle? Is there a period of time that is the best for finding applicants? And would we jeopardize that window?
I think we'd want to get the notice posting out there by May for the media specials. It tends to be a position that we may have a few applied, but, you know, you really want a quality person in that role. It's a critical role, so-
So what would happen between now and May? Perhaps the legislator saying, agreeing to the one-fifty?
Yeah.
Or a legislator's agreeing to the one-hundred? That, I guess that's the-
That's what we're thinking of. We may have further clarification on our federal entitlements as well.
Do we know what the timing is with the state budget and the legislators? Doug, you're-
Do you remember what we did when we first came on board? Do you remember how that went that year?
Yeah.
Yeah, that didn't go very well, did it? And I-
But I blame you with that.
Okay, I'll take the blame. Well, the legislature is the legislature. I wouldn't be surprised, and that's cross our fingers, that they make the final decision June thirtieth. And it could be later than that, but-
Don't you have any poll or anything like that?
I am going to poll with everything I can, but, you know.
Take it easy, I'm making a blister here.
I would rather say that we're moving ahead, and I'm not to be the flippant, that I would hope the legislature makes a move sooner than later, but I know there are certain factions that are going to be pulling away from that, and certain factions that hopefully will be pulling towards it. But we have to continue to move forward and, you know, and then continue to work with the legislature to have, hopefully, better things happen. That happened the last time. Luther Olson did come through later in the game, and we did get some additional revenue relief. Hopefully, Luther can do something amazing with Mike Ellis and others, because it will take others to make that happen, but-
Well, and one of the schools that we've identified where that person would provide support is definitely B.
Yes.
And then we want to identify another school that has high priorities for that position. The last thing we want to do again is hire somebody and stretch them out over five elementary schools. So we want to start with a focus of two of our elementary schools.
And then see what the impacts are there, and then we can move ahead. But my belief from the literature, and other things that you've said, and other things I've looked at, it's going to have an impact, a very positive impact. And I'm not willing at this point to wait on my legislators at this point to make a decision on a critical factor like that. And I don't believe that we're going to have that information as early as May. I would wish, but that's all we could do is wish when it comes to-
Martha laid out the scenario, so you understand what happens if there is no additional funding. We're looking at taking from fund balance. You know, so that's the reality of the budget that we're faced with right now as well. So it definitely has to be left up to the board. We're identifying as a need, you know, the timing is up to the board, and I would welcome any input from elementary principals if you have anything to add about that position. Now's the time to do it.
I want to be a huge benefit to what we're looking at doing. I mean, just to have that resource for the staff, because we're asking a lot from our staff already, what they're trying to implement in the classroom, and you know, like, on the project-based learning, the assessments that we're trying to implement, and trying to get the students to become independent learners and support that. They need to have someone to build to, they can help out with that. And we have staff that are amazing, but this is a weakness that they could utilize. I mean, it's so broad, of the information that's out there, and having someone that has that training, that can not only help the students and coach the teachers in utilizing that, would be a huge benefit.
Yeah, it's just helped support our literacy so much and prop it up our highest priority. But we talk about how plugged in, you know, high school kids are and middle school kids are, but our elementary kids are as plugged in as they are. And, you know, we really have an obligation and an opportunity to provide them, you know, ways how to use that effectively, but also ethically. And I can't begin to imagine the relevance that a library media specialist would bring to the instruction and the curriculum and all of the new influx of technology that's coming into our elementary schools, and to be able to use it effectively and efficiently and as powerfully as we possibly can. So it's a very exciting discussion, and really, I think, you know, significant priority and need in our elementary schools to support this area.
And again, I believe that each media specialist will make each one of our teachers more effective. And so we spend a few dollars here, but it makes, it has such a huge impact throughout the system where they are, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen staffing proposal as presented. And I'll second that.
Having a motion by Mr. McNevan and a second by Mr. Merriam, is going to be any discussion? I share Mr. Cunnings concerns about adding a position when we're, you know, under the worst-case scenario, looking at a two-hundred-and-thirty, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollar deficit. That does not include this position, which would then look like three-hundred thousand dollars in the world. But I also agree that the timing to get somebody is important. I certainly understand the elementary's argument and rationale for the position, and I am willing to support it, but with some reservations about the funding. And I think, Mr. Merriam, we will have a state budget by the middle of May, but that's my opinion. Maybe it'll be sooner.
I hope you do. I hope so. And I'll put a good budget. We just don't need a budget, we need a budget that's going to support public.
Any other comments from the board, discussions? Having a motion in the second, those in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? If you care to. Thank you to all for bringing that forward to us. Brings us to the approval of the portion recommendations.
The key to all of this, numbers themselves can be confusing, but the key to all of this is that the goal of the administration was really three-fold. We want to permit current staff members to coach. Also, we want to comply with wage and hour law, particularly the overtime law, because a lot of our employees work, for example, thirty-five hours, and if they coach, they're going to work an extra twenty, which would be fifteen hours of overtime. The third thing we want to do is we want to approximate the total compensation that the board approved through the stipend process, even though these employees are going to be paid by the hour. So really, the key to all of this, and I can get into as much detail or as little detail as you want, is that a vote in favor of our recommendations would be a vote for basically this financial status quo. The board would be allocating the same amount- The board would be allocating the same amount as it would be allocating as if we had somebody receiving a stipend.
So, if I understand correctly, we, these are anomalies, I mean, we have so many people doing so many things and because of the wage and overtime laws, these people kind of fell through cracks. And the solution, the eloquent solution here is, um, to maintain, um, for each of them, uh, their opportunity to continue the work they've been doing, uh, essentially at the stipend that the board has approved already, uh, but, uh, to, uh, uh, do it in a way that then fulfills the need requirements. And, uh, therefore, I move to.
A second.
Does Sue Zepro? Can change it? Having a motion in the second, discussion. And what is done was in favor of the approval of the portioning recommendations as presented to the C seven.
Aye.
Is opposed?
This looks simple too on paper, but there was a lot of discussion with Martha and Craig to try to get this, these numbers to work out. So, I appreciate your efforts.
This brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled new business, of which the topic is the C supply service contract. Uh, board members received one in their packet, um, regular explanation required or you wanna point out any changes or highlights?
Well, we, we did eliminate a couple services which I indicated in my initial email to you. So, the bottom, uh, dollars, three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand. Um, those numbers are, I hate to say fluid, but they do change as our student enrollment in some of the special ed programs change. And so I would encourage you, if you have any questions regarding any of the special ed services that we get from C supply, we've got Danny here who'd be happy to talk about that.
Having a motion by Mr. McNevan and a second by Mr. Cunnings is there, discussion regarding the C supply contract? You are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is opposed? Motion carried, between motion to adjourn.
Opposed. Second.
Motion by Mr. McNevan, second by the board, who is in favor.
Aye.
Is opposed.